That's kind of what I thought.
Yep.
Not that I don't want the public to know this one. All right, Jamie, you ready? Good evening. I'm going to call the Board of Selectmen's meeting for December 13th, 2021 to order. Could I get a motion to go into executive session?
I move that we go into executive session to discuss pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Paragraph 3, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigation position of the town, and the chair so declares. Christopher D. Wise versus Town of Harwich Planning Board and Hall's path.
Moved in second to go into executive session. Roll call vote. Larry?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Don, and I'm an aye. We're going to--
We had an elephant that I got at Ikea.
Y'all set?
Well, great.
Good evening.
Have a moment, Dad, come down for--
I'm going to call the Board of Selectmen's meeting for December 13th, 2021 back to order. We started tonight's meeting in executive session where we discuss strategy in respect to litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigation position of the town, and the chair so declares. And that's related to Christopher D. Wise versus Town of Harwich Planning Board, related to Hall's path in East Harwich. Some decisions were made, but we will not be announcing that as it's open litigation. With that, would you please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Anyone for public comment announcement?
Good evening. Ginny Hewitt from Brooks Free Library. I wanted to make a couple announcements. And the first one is that the Friends of Brooks Free Library have resumed their book sale operations, and the book sale room in the basement is now open. The hours are Monday, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, 1:00 to 3:00, and Tuesdays and Saturdays, 10:30 to 12:30. Most books cost a dollar or less, and the funds raised are used to support programming at the library. They're looking for donations of recently published, gently-used books. Due to the high volume and limited space, they're only accepting 20 items per person on a given day. So the second announcement I wanted to make is about a holiday program that we're running. It's called Send a Story. Most of our residents, or many of our residents, have grandchildren in other parts of the country who they aren't able to see in person very often. So that geographical separation is really hard, especially at the holidays. So to help bridge that distance, our Youth Services Librarian, Ann Carpenter, is running a Send a Story program through December. She'll record a patron reading a book that they're sending to their grandchild, and then she uploads the video. So it's online, but it only can be shared with people the reader sends the access code to, so it's not publicly available online. So there's some privacy there. But we attach a printout of the QR code and put it inside the book, and they mail it off to their grandchild. When the family gets the book, they scan the QR code, and then the child can enjoy watching the grandparent read them a story. So people can make an appointment for that by calling the library at 430-- oh, sorry, 508-430-7562, or emailing acarpenter@clamsnet.org. It's a great way for-- it could be parents, you know, it's also parents whose children don't live in the state, or grandparents, to enhance their bond with young children in their lives when they're separated by geography. So this program launched a few weeks ago, and it's already been enormously popular, so much so that we decided to partner with the Council on Aging to offer this service in January and February. Ann and our COA Director, Emily Mitchell, will host recording sessions, I believe it's at the community center, on Thursday mornings, right? Details are still being worked out, and the information will be in the upcoming Council on Aging newsletter that should be out fairly soon, so that people find out how to sign up for a spot. We're really excited about this because we think there's all kinds of great ongoing possibilities for it. And I think it's a great way to help people stay connected with family when they're out of state. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment announcement? Move on to the consent agenda.
I move that we vote to approve the consent agenda, which has three items. One is to approve Board of Selectmen meeting minutes for March 2nd, 2020. Second is to accept a gift of a memorial bench to be placed at Whichmere Harbor. And third is to approve the annual permit renewal for mooring servicing agents for calendar year 2022.
Moved in second. Any comments? I just would like to thank John Rendome for his work on the memorial bench and the communication for Whichmere Harbor. I think that the letter that was written by Brenda Zer was touching, to say the least, and I'm glad that we're able to put that bench up in memory of Darrell, for her daughters and herself. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. New business, Annual Committee Meeting, Brooks Free Library Trustees. Sit easy.
It's me, Joanne Brown, Chair of the Brooks Free Library. Brooks Free Library appreciates the opportunity to meet with the Board of Selectmen. In May of '21, Joan McCarty, Kathleen Remillard, and Jeannie Wheeler were elected for three-year -- were reelected for three-year terms and were duly sworn in by the town clerk. All board members have completed the mandated ethics training. Selectman Larry Ballantyne is our current liaison, and we appreciate his attendance at our meetings and the opportunity for an efficient exchange of information between the two boards. The Board of Trustees continues to meet monthly on the first Wednesday evening of the month at 7:00 at the library. Okay, COVID pandemic and its impact on library operations. Community conditions required a second closure of the library on December 14th of 2020, at which time the library staff once again pivoted to providing curbside service. They also developed book bundles based on-- they put several books together based on subject manner, genres, read-alikes, and other criteria. They continued to provide technology assistance and reference services over the phone. 24/7 wireless internet access was available in the library parking lot utilizing a secure and stable Open Cape Internet connection. As of July 1st, the library's return to full pre-COVID hours. We're complying with the directive from the town that masks are no longer required in the town facilities. Over the last two years, library staff have remained flexible, compassionate, and understanding under constantly changing conditions, and the board would like to commend the staff for their dedication to community of library users and for their perseverance during difficult times. Adult programs. Beginning in October of 2021, adult programs returned in-person meetings at the library. We currently have four book discussion groups, a knitlet group, musical performances, and educational programs. This fall, we were also able to bring back in-person vital training. We have plans to expand program offerings in the new calendar year. The need for technology assistance remains high, as does the need for stable and reliable internet connections. Youth Services. Our Youth Services Librarian, Ann Carpenter, provided outdoor programs over the summer and into the fall. Indoor programs are scheduled to resume in January. She's also resumed her classroom visits at the Harwich Elementary School. The library welcomes classrooms for neighboring schools who visit the library weekly for book talks, browsing, project assistance, and also offers programs for homeschool families in the community. As in years past, we offered a summer reading program, which included several outdoor programs and performances at Brooks Park. The Shared Streets Grant. Recent improvements in traffic flow changes provided by the Shared Streets Grant, as well as increased police presence along Main Street, have helped to address our concerns regarding public patron safety. Assistant-- this is another interesting thing. There's a Know Your Town podcast series. Assistant Director Emily Myland reformatted the Know Your Town, a collaborative civic community of library users. Excuse me? No. Okay. A collaborative civic education program, and planned with Voter Information Committee to utilize a virtual platform. The series of podcasts includes six episodes covering-- includes 14 episodes covering 16 different town departments. Each episode reviews the primary objectives, related budget lines, and pandemic impacts on each department. Next year, they plan to continue with boards and committees. These podcasts are available for on-demand listening on the library website, as well as Apple, Google, Spotify, and anywhere else listeners might subscribe to podcasts. The Rogers Group Preservation is complete. We announced the completion of the restoration of the Rogers Group's statues. Funded by the Community Preservation Act funds, the conservation and restoration of this historic collection was completed, and the statues were returned to the library on October 13th, 2021. We plan to celebrate this soon. For now, the statues are on display throughout the library. Guidebooks are located at public service desks on each floor of the library and available to anyone wanting to do a self-guided tour. Finally, we'd like to extend our sincere appreciation to the Friends of the Brooks Free Library for all that they do to support the library. Another major sign of the return to normal was the reopening of the Friends' book sale room in October. In November, the Friends' First Sunday Programs resumed. The Sunday Programs are hosted by the Friends and a library staff member on the first Sunday of each month at 2:00. In addition to the Friends, our volunteers were most helpful. This service provided to the community by these volunteers is extraordinary, and we appreciate their dedication. Please go to the Brooks Free Library website for more information on these topics covered tonight. Sincerely, the Brooks Free Library Board of Trustees, Joanne Brown, Joan McCarty, Bill Crowell, Kathleen Remillard, Jeannie Wheeler, Bernadette Waystack, and Linda Cibula.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Thank you. Don, questions or comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Some of the volunteer work that I do, and you're familiar with it, puts me in contact with pretty much every library across Cape Cod. And I have to say, for all you folks, because you deserve this, you do more, sometimes with less, than any library I'm familiar with. You were nimble during this pandemic, and you never got to the point where you just said, "Forget it, we can't do anything, we're closing down," so you have my great appreciation.
It's been frustrating, but the library staff has really come through, and Ginny also, Ginny and Emily.
Mary?
I agree with Don. I think it's amazing, watching through the pandemic, how you guys just kept moving things along. I really appreciate the creativity, like the book bundles. What a great idea. I don't know who your idea person is. And the summer reading program struck me. I remember doing that as a kid, and the prizes were a piece of construction paper with a fish on it, but I wanted to get those prizes. It's a great way to encourage reading, so thank you for all that you talked about, and I'm sure there's more.
Julie?
No, I want to applaud you as well. I mean, you always do a fantastic job, but to be able to continuously pivot through the pandemic, and I think the use of technology is really great. I think that, you know, we should take some pointers from the library stuff. Doing an amazing job, so thank you.
We have wonderful staff members.
Larry?
Well, at this point, I just repeat what all they said. I guess in addition to that, though, I do note that you report the Shared Streets Program and how that's helped, and I know, Joe, you're in discussions of continuing that.
Correct.
And so I think the library senses, even though it's gone a long way, pedestrian safety is still of concern.
Oh, yes.
And so, you know, keep that in mind. I know they're all working on the budget at your direction, and be sure they have funding to get the accreditation that they need to go forward, so we'll look at that, and I appreciate your work on it.
Thank you.
And they've said it all, so just diddle me for what they said.
Okay. Okay.
Ditto.
Thank you.
Great, great report, thank you. Voter Information Committee? Anyone here from Voter Information?
I'm here, but I'm not prepared to say anything, but your report is in your packet, and it's a common refrain, we're looking for members, and we may lose a couple in June. So we're short one now, we may be short three as of June.
Thank you.
And the report is in the packet.
Any comments or questions from the board, starting with Mary?
First of all, I need to apologize. I'm a little remiss. I'm your liaison, and when I was elected, you were on hiatus for the summer. Then the fall came, and whoosh, so I will come to your next meeting to at least say hello to everyone.
That's great, Mary.
Appreciate also that you put some recognition of Peg Rose in here.
Oh, my gosh.
We can't recognize her enough.
Yep.
So thank you.
Very nice.
Julie?
I just want to thank you constantly. You're always out there, you know, giving the voters the information they need, and you're always interactive, and I appreciate that, and I appreciate your report.
Thanks.
Larry?
Great job.
I'd also mention the Know Your Town podcast. We also were partnering with the library for those. Voter Information was.
Don?
What they said about your good work, but in terms of filling vacancies, we can't fill the ones that are expiring in June, but please, everybody who's watching, it's an important committee, and I hope people submit applications for it.
I hope so. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
On to the Golf Committee.
Thank you, Mike. Folks, you have my report as well, and in the interest of brevity, it was broken down for the-- just as far as the public's concerned, into highlights, kind of a committee overview as requested by the Selectmen or Select Board, and finally, a vision for our long-range plan. So I'd open it up to questions in any of those specific areas that you might have to ask of me.
Thank you, Clem. Larry?
So are we talking about the fee structure now, or that comes later?
No, just the report.
Okay, no. I'm okay with the report.
Julie?
No, I--
I guess it was succinct enough.
No, it's great to see the solar stuff working out, so it's excellent.
Yeah, we are, I mean, as homeowners, et cetera, you people would be pleased. Mike Surgeon, the coordinator, a lot of the bookkeeping for the operation, he showed me a list of electric bills, Don, zero, 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 14,000, zero. And coincidentally, today, we did get delivered 60 out of the 80 brand-new electric golf cars, and they are state-of-the-art, pretty spectacular. Sean was there today, so that just happened by coincidence.
Great. Mary?
I just had one question.
Sure.
On the long-range plans, a nursery slash putting complex designed for super senior access after hours. What are we doing there? What is that?
Okay. I'll try to clarify the mystery. You've got to get a plane ticket and join me to go to St. Andrews in Scotland.
Okay.
And basically-- And we'll take the whole board. Joe, find the money. The Golf Channel has a variety of films that they air, you know, to segment between tournaments and so on. And there's one in particular that deals with St. Andrews, its historical origins and so on. And this is somewhat sexist because it's women-specific. The Ladies of St. Andrews had a desperate need to be engaged with the golf operation. So what they devised was an idea of coming up with a putting complex, which basically mimics 18 holes of golf, except it's like a giant putting green, if you will. And our vision is to replicate not exactly the same thing, but something that would function in that capacity, where super seniors would be able to come up to the golf course after hours with our additional credits as far as solar's concerned. We envision possibly lighting this complex and allowing people to engage in, you know, less-than-formal regulation golf. So it's, you know, it's a real adjunct, and it's not specific just to seniors, because the junior component, which is the short course, we've been mapping out an area that we want to designate for that purpose. Does that help at all?
I'm good with that, except what's the nursery? Are you taking care of little kids, or are you growing plants?
No, this is the great part. Golf courses are always challenged by having additional turf available in the event of a catastrophe like insect damage, it could be a chemical spill, et cetera. Having this additional turf, I say in quotes, gives us the opportunity, if that circumstance presented itself, to, you know, basically cut up the turf, replace on active greens, because presently, we don't have that kind of functionality.
Thank you.
Okay?
Yes, thank you very much.
Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Clem knows, I don't hover, so kind of what Mary was saying. I don't go to the meetings, although you can, and you do contact me, and we do talk when you need to. So as adults, I trust your judgment, and you're doing a good job.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much.
Great job, Clem.
Yeah. You know, one highlight, too, because it came out, Mike, last year. You know, under this new normal, one of the fringe benefits that we were able to embrace once again was reaching out to the community, both with the chamber. They will have a designated tournament at the golf club this year, as well as the town boosters, and I realize that was, you know, rather obvious to you, so--
That's great.
Great.
Great news.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, folks.
Cemetery Commission?
Skip planning.
Planning Board doesn't matter?
I thought I'd make Duncan stay through the whole meeting. But I've been superseded, so go ahead.
You all have my report. It was pretty much a statistical analysis of what we did over the last year. Two, or I would say maybe three items were worth noting. Number one is we have a new town planner, of course, John Ideman, who I want to say we are all very enthusiastic about. Terrific performance on his part. He has brought us up to speed on the legalities crisply and effectively with every case, so thank you for that. Second issue is we have two alternates that are open, so if you hear of anybody that's around that could serve on our board, we'd need two alternates in the event that somebody misses the meeting or is, you know, can't participate. And finally, we had the passing of Al Atkinson, who had served in the board, I guess, for almost 11 years, over two terms last month, and we noted that with some regret and dismay, but we're chugging along, and in this kind of in-person mode, we're getting things done, so happy to field any questions.
Great, thank you, Duncan. Julie?
No, I don't have any questions. I thought your report was great. You know, I know that you have so many different applications in front of you based on all the activity going on out there, so sure, it's not easy to keep your agenda.
It slowed down considerably from what was going on in 2019 and 20, in the first, you know, maybe four, six months of 2020, but it's gonna, I suspect it's gonna pick back up.
Pick back up, yeah. No, thank you. Thank you very much for the report.
Larry?
No, good report. I'm glad you mentioned Al Atkinson, because he was a vital member of the Planning Board for a long time, and a very good spokesman for Harwich.
Mary?
I'm all set, Duncan. Great report.
Thank you, Mary.
Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, we're on the vacancy part of this, but since you've got the bully pulpit, I just want to repeat to everybody out there that the regulatory boards, the Planning Boards, ZBA, Conservation Commission, Board of Health, super important. We totally rely on citizen participation to keep things running in this town, so if anybody has the inclination, you know, to join any of those, particularly Planning Boards in front of us, please put an application in.
Yep. Great.
Thank you, Duncan.
Thank you so much.
Now the Cemetery Commission.
Someone else can go first?
I was gonna skip over you, but I decided not to.
My name's Steve Fein, I'm the Chair of the Cemetery Commission. We're full, our committee is full, and we've all been sworn in and have our ethics up to date, and Julie Kavanaugh is our liaison. And we submitted the whole report, and in lieu of reading it all again to you, then I will open it up for questions.
Thank you. Don?
I have nothing. Thank you for your service, though.
Thank you.
Mary?
I'd just like to thank you for the incredibly moving Veterans Day service. It's the first time I had attended, and I just was blown away by the number of people that were there. That was the Colonel that you brought in to speak, the kids that sang. It was just very special, so thank you.
I think Robyn's in charge for that.
Actually, we probably want to thank Shawnee Carroll for that. She is our veterans agent. She did an exceptional job. I did assist her, but she did most of the legwork. She's an excellent replacement for Will Remillard, so.
Don?
But Mary was on to something. You folks did some yeoman's work to get that place all cleaned up and ready to go for that day, so you do deserve thanks.
And hopefully next year, they'll be over at the new monument over at Evergreen Cemetery.
Larry?
No, very nice report, very good report. Thank you.
Julie?
No, I did note the sort of trend towards cremations and such, and I don't mean to sound morbid, I just-- But, no, I think it's interesting. I think more and more people are looking at that, and I think it's great that you're sort of seeing that coming your way and looking at whatever changes in lot sizes, et cetera. And I am your liaison, and I will make it to a meeting. I haven't been yet since the election, so I will attend shortly.
Great, great, great report. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Community Preservation Committee?
Mr. Chairman, I received word from the chairman. He's unable to attend this evening.
Moving on to B, Preliminary Discussion of Cultural Center Gym Use Schedule and Fees. Want to start this one, Joe?
So, Mr. Chairman, as board members had requested before, Megan and I met with Chair of the Wreck and Youth Commission, John Mahan, for statistics, as well as from Eric Beebe. And so what you have in your packet this evening is their latest information on the wreck department's use of the gymnasium over at the Cultural Center, and I think the board is aware that a request has been made to expand pickleball hours, I believe, on Tuesdays and Thursdays as well. But this is the most up-to-date information from the Wreck and Youth Department.
Thank you. I did ask for this to be put on for an initial discussion. We have had the Chair of the Finance Committee question us on this building and where we're going and what our plan is. We're going to lead into more of a discussion, I think, on the next agenda item. One thing that's come to me several times is that the gym is always full, and it's usually full with pickleball people. Bob Brackett, who does the youth soccer program, has often been told, "No, there's no space." So I would like the board to consider, through the administrator, looking at the schedule and seeing into it that we can open the gym up to other organizations besides just the pickleball club. And again, initial discussion, but as we progress with that building, if we're going to keep it, we need to start thinking of what we're going to do with gymnasium, what we're going to do with cafeteria, and what we're going to do with the auditorium, as well as the rest of the spaces in there. So comments, questions, or thoughts from the board? And I'll start with Mary. So comments, questions, or thoughts from the board, and I'll start with Mary.
Is there, is there any reason that the times that aren't taken, Brackett couldn't use those times?
I think we have to have our administrator ask the rec director, Eric Beebe, that question.
Oh, Eric, Eric controls that?
My understanding is that Bob started his program, I believe it's called Footsaw, and they did start either last week or the week before.
Okay, that's good.
So I do know that he has some availability there.
That's good news. Don, or Mary, anything further?
No, just, I didn't know pickleball could be done inside.
Don?
Yes, it can.
I guess it can.
And just so John hears this, things changed, especially with the Monomoy Regional School District. When those schools became regionalized, there were a lot of promises made when, you know, the then middle school, which was reopened again, I think it was 1991, they promised to allow the facilities to be used, like the gymnasium and such. And, you know, there are a lot of people that have a lot of programs that are spilling out beyond the community center, and it's, I know they've got the cultural center and the rooms and the artists' areas and everything, but it does have the facilities that Michael's talking about, and it's a very useful building insofar as, I mean, these people aren't just saying, let me use the building. It's our townspeople, and they can't use the community center effectively because there's too many things going on.
Thank you, Don. Julie?
No, I agree. I mean, we have a big cafeteria there, that'd be great to see if that could get used in some capacity, in the, in the auditorium, et cetera. And I, and to Mary's point, you know, there's, what, pickleball during the day on Monday, Wednesday, Friday, but the evenings must have some availability to open up to, to others, so I think I need to learn how to play pickleball.
Larry?
Thank you, Michael. I was just trying to understand the twenty participants in issue of the after-school programs. Is sort of coincidence that it's the same number for each program? Is that based on the size of the, is that actual, or that's how many could use it, the gym, or where does that come from?
No, my understanding from the report is that is the actual number, and it's based on the program availability, program aid availability.
So there's a program that has twenty?
Correct.
Whatever they're doing every afternoon. That's my understanding.
The intent, the intent is to get the conversation going and start looking at what we're charging. Like tonight, we're going over golf fees. I'd be remiss if I didn't commend Carolyn Carey for what she has done to get that place to where it is now. We have a fairly sizable fund, and I know as we talk about budgets, we're gonna talk about expending some of those funds. But now that there is a lack of a person running that building, other than the town administrator at this point, we need to have a, a much broader conversation
Yeah.
about fees and who's in control, and, and try and take this to the next level if we want to keep that building. We're, we're fast approaching the end of our trial period, and I know Finance Committee has expressed concern with what they call a lack of a plan. I think we do have a plan right now, but we certainly need to take that plan to the next level.
You've stolen a lot of my thunder. I'm Ralph Smith from Harwichport. I'm here as one of those avid pickleball players that plays Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, and every other chance that I get. We would really like to have Tuesdays and Thursdays, even if we had to cut the hours back from eight to twelve, to eight to eleven, something like that. But we put thirty people or so in the, in that gym every morning that were allowed. And we would really like to have Tuesday and Thursday. So I, I know that some of you are familiar with an email that I sent out to Frank, and I think the town administrator was aware of it, urging that you approve the, the additional days. So we'll take all the time we can get, but Tuesday and Thursday, the place is empty. I can think of no reason, and I've been given no reason, why we shouldn't be allowed to play in there, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Joe, I'm not aware of that email, but I do, I do think it's time that we have Eric Beebe in, and we start discussing some of the other requests that we've had to use that gymnasium, who's been told no and why, and then certainly take into consideration the request for more pickleball. But I certainly think we need to address the fee schedule for all of it.
I have copies of that email, if I'd be permitted to give it to the members.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I didn't have time to draft one specifically for this meeting, but which I sent out to Frank Crowell, probably who's our.
Thanks, Ralph.
Head, if you will.
Thank you, Ralph. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yep.
Joe, I'm moving to C, Discussion and Possible Vote. Wanted to draft a warrant article for Cultural Center.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, this is the part where I've alerted Carolyn that I'm gonna say many wonderful things about her, so that's why I didn't do it under Item B, but truly, the discussion you just started on the Cultural Center gym use, when we talk about the Cultural Center tonight and going forward, as the Capitol Outlay Committee tomorrow afternoon and evening, and throughout the remainder of their process, we'll be talking about the Cultural Center. We can't do justice to talk about the Cultural Center without first recognizing Carolyn Carey and the work that she's done to get that not only established, but thriving. And it's not just the presence that she's created for it on the town website, but you could rely upon that alone as an example. It's not just the rapport she's established with all the men and women that love to be in that building from a cultural aspect, as well as the men and women that love to be in that building for a recreational aspect. All of that ties back to Carolyn, and when she had Megan and I there last week, I'm gonna have to give up our secret, she hosted us last week, and we didn't want to leave, it was so damn comfortable. And it, not just comfortable, but there's a vibe that's there. And so knowing that there has been discussion generally about what is going to happen with the Cultural Center, I wanted to take the initiative of having this item tonight to alert the board that I am planning on, unless the board tells me otherwise, to develop a specific position known as Director of Cultural Affairs. And that person would have primary responsibility over the Cultural Center building, as well as the two Cultural Center districts that we hopefully will have approved in the springtime, as well as any number of other tasks that I'll be able to demonstrate in the job description, where dealing with human services grants, dealing with grant writing generally, and really just having a person and a name and a face to go with that building, because in my perspective, the building is working. We can tweak the dollar amounts on the rents, or we could tweak the dollar amounts on the participant fees for recreation, but by and large, that building is, is very well used. I use that phrase specifically because tomorrow, we're gonna start talking at the Capitol Outlay Committee about making sure that that building is very well maintained, and that is the part that hasn't been happening. And I will fully admit that my hand on the Capitol Outlay the last two years was to stall certain activities as it relates to that building. However, as I promised Capitol Outlay last year, I would make sure that we all, the town, had a discussion about that building, and it starts with this capital plan, it starts with this potential article. And the article is necessary, in my opinion, because this would be a new position to town, and the charter requires that a new full-time position, if endorsed by the Board of Selectmen, must go before town meeting. And so that's what I wanted to announce this evening. But again, I want to bring it back to Carolyn, because none of this would be possible if we couldn't build upon the work that Carolyn has done for, for many years now on that. And, and I think it's appropriate to recognize her tonight for those efforts, but also to recognize those efforts by trying to keep that project and that building and that vibe going forward.
Thank you, Joe. And thank you, Carolyn. Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. John, I had kind of brought up that date for a good reason before. Everybody somehow has it in their mind, it was an old derelict building, and Michael would know, because he started out on that committee for getting in to the selectmen gig. And it's, it's newer than this. What was happening was, it was decaying, and it was almost being willfully brought to its knees. Things were leaking, things were decaying, there was mold and mildew developing. There's a financial component on this that's a positive one. I mean, even if you consider Larry's age-old arguments about looking at total cost analysis of this, there are other things going on. There's a financial component to the cultural district. I mean, the state is actually pretty excited about this. People visit for different reasons here. The bike path is one of them. It's not just beaches. And when that gets off the ground, we expect that there will be people coming in, and it'll be revenues coming into the town with that, you can see that there are people who are willing to, to pay fees to get in, to use the gym, and as Julie said, there's the cafeteria that we can get recertified for, you know, for serve-safe purposes, which is something that we don't have anywhere. We've got the one kitchen in the community center. Thank God that Carolyn was involved in resuscitating that. It was pretty darn close just going out from neglect. So the experiment, if it says anything, is through willpower and spreading out the use, there is a need. The question now is, how do we show some pro forma that makes sense financially, so we can get this thing going forward, and we can invest, you know, the, the amounts of money in a coherent way? We're not just dumping money all at once. But it was never something with, that building was just old, get rid of it. It never was that. That building opened in ninety-one, and it was totally refurbished, and it has a historic component, too, because the back portion of it was the old high school. So when it opened up as the middle school, that, that is part of our heritage. So as long as there's money involved with this, I think we should follow the path that the board that, you know, Julie and Michael and I were on, and Larry, to push that forward to see what we could get out of it. And it's actually exceeded most of my expectations, and I'm pretty sure that everybody else feels that same way.
Comments, Don, on the proposed warrant article for?
I'm in. I think we should.
Mary?
I'm in as well. A few years back, I think the Chamber did a survey of why, I think this goes back to Sandy Davidson, why people came to Harwich, and I think second after the beaches was the art community. So it clearly is a draw. The other reason I'm in favor of this, Bernadette Waystack, who's in the back of the room, called me a month or so ago, it looked like there was a potential grant for capital money in the amount of like $200,000 that would have been, it looked like this building was the perfect fit for it. Unfortunately, neither Bernadette are full-time, you know, researching grants, and the deadline had passed. But it looks like it's something they do every year, so I put it on my calendar, I'm sure Bernadette put it on hers, that we'll chase that next year. I, there's a bunch of things that have to happen there, and we could maybe pay for one of them.
Thank you, Mary. Julie?
No, I agree. I mean, I think that the, that building has come a long way since we all originally talked about, you know, how to get going on it, and Carolyn put in countless hours on getting people interested and getting in there, and I think it's really taken on a life of its own, and everybody seems to really enjoy it, and as you say, has a good vibe. I mean, it's kind of a jewel, and we got the cultural district, we should just keep going. I think we've got a great thing going on, and we should keep some life breathed into it, so that we make sure our kid continues.
Larry?
I support the warrant article moving forward. I think it's, it's an opportune time, the dot points that you presented, Joe, for a discussion of the, the building, the, I'd like a review of the Cultural Center district. I know this was brought up before, but in some time, I've probably forgotten what that's about, and bring that back to the fore. The grant writing, as we've talked several times, would be a great, if we use it for this, we can use it across the, across the town, it might be an entry into that. I am, as Don referred to, I'm always interested in a, a budget, a plan with revenue and expenses, both operational expenses and capital expenses. So I think that's one of the concerns that some folks have had, that we're not adequately reflecting the capital expenses in the future. We know it's gonna need a roof, I think, in a few years and other items. We, the town should be appraised on all that, so we have a full understanding, and then we have, can have a serious discussion on what the fees should be. But it has created, and I'll add my thanks to Carolyn, it's done a good job, but I, I still think there's a lot more we can do with that building, and, and we haven't fully utilized the resource. And this will give an opportunity to look at all of that. So I, I'm fully support the warrant. I expect a lot of detailed information as we get into that discussion.
Thank you, Larry. Joe, do you have?
Yeah, just to follow up, you know, what, what we're talking about is for that, for that Cultural Center, for that really culture that's been developed there, for that to succeed going forward, we need to ensure that we have the primary director, of course, but also the primary advocate, because we've been able to rely upon Carolyn for all these years, but that was one of many several jobs that she's doing. And so we want to be able to build off of what Carolyn has created, and make sure that there is a person dedicated to that building, but also more, when we talk about the artists' and shacks, those human services grants, and the grant writing. And I do know two things. I do know that it can support a full-time position, there's no doubt about that, that the work will be there for that person. And I do know that the Cultural Center in that building will not succeed without a position dedicated to advocating for it.
Thank you, Joe.
Good evening, everyone. Bernadette Waystack, let me think of which hat I'm going with first. I was here for the library earlier. I'm on the Board of Libraries, you know. I was here before you a couple of weeks ago as current Chair of the Cultural Council, not to be confused with the Harwich Cultural Center, of which I am a renter for almost three years. I also taught for twenty years in that building when it was Harwich Middle School. I was the last art teacher there when we packed up and moved everything out. First, last, and always, I want to reiterate what everyone has said tonight. Carolyn has done the most amazing job with what has gone on over there, and if nothing else, I wanted to stand here tonight to make sure that she got her due, as well as Erica Strzepk, who was our former program aide. Joe, I am so, so happy to hear everything that you've just said. I have just come from a charrette at the Cultural Center. The renters, thanks to Judith Underwood, who's also a renter, had tried to organize a number of meetings, because we couldn't all get to one meeting, because all of us is somewhere between forty and sixty individuals. But one of the important things is it's for everyone. We've been really trying hard, especially this summer, we worked really hard to piggyback on some of the other cultural events going on on the grounds, to be able to get people in there as much as we were able to, because when there isn't a person in charge who can keep consistent hours to keep a center open, you can't get the public in. And the biggest worry I've had all along is not whether I can sell my art or not, it's for people to know that there's a lot going on in there, that there's a lot of people, and that we want it open to the public, and that we want more people coming in and using the place than just the renters. It's not a closed club for sixty people, or we don't want it to be. COVID has caused a real, you know, halt to things, right when I think it was just starting to get some traction. And what we talked about tonight, we were just all brainstorming things, and there'll be a whole list of stuff coming from all four of the groups once she gets it coalesced. But one of the things we did talk about tonight was the fact that there was a temporary job coming up, that we weren't gonna be, as I said, rudderless over there, you know? And you got a bunch of artists, like, some of them don't have a head for business, you know, you're not gonna, and you get a lot of personalities. And you have some people who are just gonna come in there, and they just want to go in, and they just want to do their thing, and they're gonna go out. But there's a lot of us. As you said, Joe, there's a real vibe. I can work anywhere, I can work in my basement. I've worked in Barnstable at a similar, smaller model like this in the past, but when I sat down with Carolyn a couple of years ago, I said, this is what I miss. I didn't miss trying to have the energy to drive thirteen miles after my full-time day job teaching art to go to Barnstable. I loved, you know, and I didn't want to share a place, so I have a small place, it's my former principal's office that is now my studio. But I, the thing that I missed, I didn't miss the long commute, I didn't miss sharing a studio with someone, but what I missed was what I have here now. Even when I go in there and I'm all by myself in my studio, I know there are other people in there, and there is, it's like this hive of creativity, there's a lot going on, and there's so much potential for there to be more, for us to bring people in and share classes, for other people to come in and use the common space to share classes. It really, really is a, a special place, and to have someone, as you say, who not only can do the administrative work that needs to be done, but has that sense of what the cultural vision needs to be. be done, but has that sense of what the cultural vision needs to be, is, is perfect. And as cultural chair, I'll just explain a little bit about two things. Cindy Williams at the Chamber and I are still in communication with the MCC Liaison for Cultural Districts. We're unique in that we're the only last one in the state that's ever going to have two separate cultural districts. And we're back on track and it should be sometime this spring that it gets the final approval. So we don't have them yet, but we will hopefully by this spring have that part of the deal sealed. And that brings your cultural economy back in too. And the other part of that is the grant that Mary mentioned. It is a cultural facilities grant that the MCC, I deal with the local cultural council and that's a different department. But I did come across this, the cultural facilities grants they have. It wasn't just a one-time thing. And Mary and I are gonna, you know, put our heads together about it and be ready for it next year. The deadline for the grants hasn't passed, but there was unfortunately a deadline for a letter of intent that by the time I looked at it, realized about it, I kicked it to Mary because I said, I don't think as an individual I should be doing this, but I wanted her to know about it. It was past the deadline. So we couldn't get ourselves in there for this year, but hopefully in the next couple of years. But one of the things they'll be looking for is potential and for a plan in place. So it sounds like we're on the right path right now and I'm happy to help out in any way that I can. And I thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you.
And once more, thank you to Carolyn.
Thank you. Anyone else? Joe, I think you have some direction.
Absolutely. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Discussion and possible vote to authorize three members of the finance committee to participate remotely. John, welcome. Get you, get you moving again. We're all aware of your request and why. So I'm going to start with Joe. And at least the initial thought is where we are with membership. I don't think it's possible for us to approve to allow three to participate remotely. You have one member that has been out ill for quite some time?
That is correct.
Okay. And has the request been made to that member to resign?
Yes, it has, yeah. I'm working with Mr. Ford on that right now.
And then you have at least one more vacant?
There's one vacant slot, right.
Also a vacant slot. So it's two out, Joe. And your thoughts? I know you and I had a brief conversation about if three are remote, you have to have a quorum present to open a meeting if you do remote participation.
Right. If so, if I may, there's two things that would be at play here in Harwich and in no particular order. But first is the town's procedure for remote participation, which was promulgated by Boards of Selectmen in 2012 and 2016. And it very clearly lays out the criteria. And criteria number seven says, remote participation shall be limited to two members at any meeting. So the request runs contrary to the town's procedure. I would leave that to the board as your procedure to deal with it as you see fit. The second element is because we in Harwich are operating under pre-pandemic remote participation, not post-pandemic remote participation as Governor Baker has allowed, meaning the town has announced that essentially we are conducting in-person meetings. And so that's where your procedure comes back into play. But that's where you'd also want to look back in the Division of Open Governments statements on that. And any entity has to be mindful that, because I think your procedure is silent to it, you must have a physical quorum present as the chairman stated. So if you have three away, which may be allowed under the state's provisions, but not under the town's provision, but if you have three away and two in present, you don't have a physical quorum and that committee could run a follow of the open meeting law.
Thank you, Joe. Mary?
But I think, I'll let Joe speak to this, I'm sorry, John speak to this. Although there's three that are going to be away, only two of them overlap at any given time. So I don't think we have trouble with three. Is that correct, John?
That's correct. In the, in the note that I, I sent, Joe, there are three members that are requesting remote participation. One is starts, he, he would start December 27, uh, December 17th to January 3rd. And he'd be out by himself. There'd be no one else out at that time. He comes back and then another gentleman leaves January 14th, comes back March 4th. And then the third person leaves March, January 30th and comes back March 19th. So at one point, two people will be out together. And that period of time is for 32 days. So that's two people out. I'm hoping, hoping that we have a full board of nine members. I know there's at least three or four people that have put in applications to be on the finance committee. So I'm hoping that we have a full board, a full board, board very shortly of nine members. So if two are out, seven would be there. I've always had good participation in my meetings. So I don't anticipate any issues at all getting a quorum of five people for the requirement of in-person meetings. And then two can dial in remotely if they choose. But we, we would meet the five-person quorum regardless of people out. If we get the full board of two members, yes, more members.
Thank you, John. Mary?
The only other thing, John has been trying to get this replacement since August. And I, I understand our moderator is busy and has a legal practice. But I wonder if we can change things, that he can delegate the interviewing and the recommending to the Board of Selectmen or the interview committee and then have him do the actual appointment. Four months is an awful long time, especially, we're now going right into budget time and that gives no opportunity. And frankly, it was the same a year ago when I came on. It was a good three months. I, I just wonder if that's just too much for him and we should give him an out where he could delegate that to the selectmen.
Don?
Actually, she said it all. The policy is the policy, but the problem is, and I mentioned this when you were in here before, is there needs to be a little bit more involvement. And maybe we can work something out with Michael. But he's a, he's a creature of the town meeting. He's elected to, to appoint members. So we have little authority other than what Mary's suggesting.
Julie?
Yeah, no, I don't have a, I understand that difficulty and that's a, that's a conversation. But in terms of the, the remote participation, if you have, if you have only the two members that will overlap and, but you'll be able to make the quorum, I, I haven't had a problem.
Right. Yeah. I don't anticipate, even, you know, being down one member, I, I'm sure we would meet a quorum of five members.
Larry?
Yeah, I, I think Mary made me feel better about this, explaining, and you explained the schedule. So we do meet the policy, it'd be only two members at any one time with remote. I, I think we've been frustrated for years now how long it is to appoint people to FinCom. I don't think through your suggestion, Mary, that we could get involved because FinCom is supposed to be a separate from the Board of Selectmen. Because they, they're supposed to be a check and balances on us. And so we got too, too close to that. That'd be tough to sell. But I'm okay with the recommendation with the timing that's been explained.
Joe?
I'm a strict traditionalist when it comes to separation of powers, if you will. The charter clearly states that the moderator appoints the finance committee. He could rely upon interview, but that would have to be his decision-making.
John, have you talked to Michael about the member that's been absent, ill?
I have, yes.
And is he waiting for a resignation that he may never get? Or does he, I know he has the power to just remove him. Has that been suggested?
Yes. I mean, without getting into, you know, the personal details of people, I have tried to contact this individual numerous times, over months of times, and have not gotten a response. I did refer this all to Michael, as Mary stated in August. I spoken to Michael last week. He said he would be working on it. So it's, as far as I'm led to believe, it's fully in Michael's control of, of this. If it was in my control, I'd have two appointments tomorrow. But I, I don't have that power. But he is aware of this individual, yes.
Thank you, John. Could I get a motion on the request? Because if it's, if it's only two overlapping, it doesn't conflict with either policy.
I move that we vote authorize three members of the finance committee to participate remotely.
Second.
Moved in second. Any further discussion? Don?
Yeah, I'm just questioning, do we need to even take a vote? Because it's within the confines of the policy that the Board of Selectmen has already established and they're not violating anything.
Request was made for, for a vote.
Okay.
If you don't think we need, why don't we vote?
We could vote. I'm just, I'm just pointing out, we have an established policy and they're within the confines of it.
So I think for future, John, you don't even have to request it.
Okay. I just, I just know you had a Board of Health or something a couple of weeks ago and that's why I tried to follow that.
That was for a really extended period of time for a member.
Okay, fine. I'm with that.
Thank you.
If I could ask this a quick, a couple of quick questions. Have we got a new video program yet, Joe? Because that would help tremendously, I think. I know you're looking at other remote video programs possible.
We are presently still relying very reluctantly upon go-to-meeting.
Okay.
At present.
Okay. And then, and then the other thing, which has nothing to do with this, but just to follow up on that last conversation with the cultural center, I applaud you for what you're doing, Joe, on this, on this cultural center. It's a huge step in the, in the right direction, I think. And Michael, thank you for getting it on the agenda and the rest of the board members realizing that it is a hidden jewel, a hidden asset, or whatever you want to call it. And all we're asking for from the finance committee is just a plan of what we're going to do with that asset. You know, we have no preconceived notions, one way or the other. It's just a fiduciary responsibility to the town to have some type of plan. And I would also like to thank Carolyn personally too. I know she's put a tremendous amount of work into that, into that building. I saw it before she started and I've seen it now. And it's, it is a tremendous asset to the folks over there and to the artisans. Nope, she's gone. Okay. But thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you, John. All in favor?
Aye.
Five zero, Joe?
Thank you.
Without objection from the board, I'd like to take F before E and vote the rate and fee recommendations before we get into the Affordable Housing Trust. We have two people here tonight for the golf fees and I don't see anyone besides everyone sitting at this table for the housing trust. So any objections?
No.
Mary, can I get a motion?
I move that we vote to approve the 2022 Golf Department rate and fee recommendation.
Second. Okay, it's been moved in second and any discussion from the board?
No, I think the fees make a lot of sense. My, my question about the fees were, were actually kind of a side issue. And that is, you have the different categories and you listed the fees and how much you've increased. When I look at that, my question is, how many participants do you have in each of the categories? You know, say, Harwich residents, other residents, non-residents. Could you have those numbers or could you get those for me?
Clint, Sean?
I'd be interested in that.
I don't have those numbers because Roman, who I'm filling in for tonight, using Carrie's all those numbers. I didn't get those on the, on the memo.
I don't need them tonight. I'm just anxious. I just, I'd just like to get that, those numbers to understand what it is.
We have no problem. We'll give you those. Roughly, we have about 1,200 to 1,300 members that states, and roughly about 900 are residents. The rest of it is juniors and then non-residents.
Okay.
So could you just identify yourself for the record?
I'm Sean Fernandez, Golf Course Superintendent at Cranberry Valley Golf Course.
We all know you, but the public might want to know.
I understand.
If you could get those to me, yeah.
Mary was supposed to remind you, but I remember.
If you could send those to, I think, Joe and then they could distribute that.
Clint, get right to the mic if, get right to the, get right to the mic if you want to say something.
Just that, the figures are absolutely available, Larry.
Yeah, I'm sure they are.
Because we use, we use those in our projections. It's very important. As far as that distribution and thanks to Roman's hard work, I mean, we literally go through a four to five-year analysis as far as comparative data. You know, just so that you can see Julie what those trends are and, you know, what it, you know, bodes for the future.
Thank you. If I may, I have one question, just probably my ignorance, but what's CHIN handicap service?
It's, it's just through the United States Golf Association, it's, it's a wonderful program where they provide the service, Larry, to track people's handicaps. And there's a service fee associated with that. And, you know, across the industry, that's been standardized. So that's, you know, that's why it's included as a fee.
Okay.
Because at one point in time, kind of ancient history, 10 years ago, some people wanted to participate, others didn't. Some advocated various handicap systems. There's only one. And we've standardized that. Okay?
Okay. Thank you.
All in favor?
I just had one question.
Sure.
I, I applaud the getting Chatham Orleans and One More Town. They're eventually going to be the same as the other non-residents. But the thing I noticed in the, the chart that showed the other towns, the other towns seem to have a bigger difference between resident and non-resident. Should we be maybe trying to do that as well, moving the non-resident? Ours is only $200 difference. Some of them are like $500 difference.
So the reason that's the case is the other towns all have two golf courses. We only have one. So I understand when you have two golf courses, you got to charge a little bit more because they have access to two golf courses. We only have one golf course. So we have a limited number of tee times that we can provide.
Okay. Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
People, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Moving back to E discussion, no, not E. Where am I?
I think it was E.
No, you're right.
Discussion and possible vote, board input on the Harwich Affordable Housing Trust documents, including membership. This conversation is meant to be an initial discussion. We are, we are, this is a funny document. As one board member is a selectman and a trustee and the town administrator is the town administrator and a trustee. And then there's three at large. The next meeting we have, I would imagine, would be a joint meeting. And if anyone besides who's sitting here, any member of the trust wants to attend, they have to post it as an open meeting. But this is meant for initial discussion. I believe the trust has already started conversation on this. And I would rely on our town administrator. And I, I would say that, given the activity of the trust right now, at least for me and this board member, it would be helpful to have more updates from the trust as it relates to building and property purchases. I would like to get more of an update. And since we all sit together every Monday night, it shouldn't be very difficult. With that, I'll turn it over to the town administrator, who is the chair of the trust by way of the trust document.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. As with an earlier article, this is an effort for me to get a concept or a topic in front of the board for ongoing and initial and ongoing discussion. And as the chairman said, the trust has minimally begun the process of reviewing the trust document. But by that, I mean, at our meeting in January, we expect as trust members to go through the document and make recommendations on changes and all of that. What I wanted to be able to rely upon this evening was me advising you folks as your administrator. I serve, as, as was indicated, on the trust by virtue of being the administrator. You folks make me the administrator and I thought it appropriate for me to seek either direction, guidance, input, or for at least me to tell you, tell you my thoughts before it gets presented to the trust. And specific to membership. And my thoughts are, the trust is a confusing document in many instances and it talks about the administrator or their designee serving on the trust, but that the administrator serves as chair. And so for me, that causes me not to have a designee of mine on the trust because I don't know how it would affect the chairman position. And so I think it's appropriate, if the board thinks as well, that the chair position language would support any member of the trust or anything other than the administrator solely serving in the chair capacity for the trust document. So that's my thinking. I wanted to express that to the board before the trust gets into their process because under the trust document, to amend the trust, it must be all members of the trust agreeing. And then it goes to the Board of Selectmen and all members of the board must agree. And so I wanted to start that discussion at both levels. So that was my purpose for having it on tonight.
Thank you, Joe. Don?
Yeah, just building on what Joe said. Strangely, there wasn't a single member of the trust that was aware of the, the actual declaration of trust document. They were relying on the bylaw that got passed. And one of the members said it, when we finally found that document, because Chris never shared it with us. It should have been on the, the website. If you go to the, and this is, I'm speaking just for myself because the, the trust has not engaged in a vote on it. We had
We headed that off, actually, because they were going to, one of the members wanted to shovel it off the council, but this is a policy issue that everybody's got to agree to. One, I'm going back and looking at the meeting that Julie had chaired when we passed this. There wasn't much of a robust discussion. It wasn't because of Julie, because we just all thought, hey, we passed a town meeting, it must be consistent with it. Went back to Mass General Law. The relevant section of this is Chapter 44, Section 55(c). And as Joe pointed out, I mean, there's language in there that there's a bunch of musts. It has to have a minimum of five, it has to have some citizen participation, it has to have a member of the executive, which is either the mayor or a member of the Board of Selectmen. And then it says, you may, you know, choose to, notwithstanding that, you may choose to appoint the town manager or town administrator as a member of the chair or the board, with or without voting power, I might add. None of that's inconsistent. The problem is, in the actual, and the document that passed town meeting kind of mirrored that, and then for some reason, it got inserted, the town administrator had to be the chair, regardless of who was on the trust, in perpetuity. And as Joe pointed out, it's really murky. Or the designee, does that mean you're designating the chair with that person? Or is that designation for the whole term of year, or is it for that meeting? It's extremely difficult to effectuate. I know, I've spoken to Larry about this in the past, and I've spoken to Michael about it, just for the whole board here. One of the concerning things is, when you start going down that road, if the chair always has to be the town administrator, question always arises, who is actually talking, and who does that person actually respond to, or part of? Joe, as a town administrator, works for all of us, as a Board of Selectmen. When he's sitting in the trust, we have certain votes. And at that point, you start getting to the point of saying, who's the master of an action if there's an inconsistency? Because what the legislation did not do, is it did not actually designate the Boards of Selectmen throughout the state as being "the trust," like they do for liquor licenses, we're one and the same. It's become a really confusing thing as a trust document. Didn't wind up being too much of a problem last year, because the then-town administrator was gone, I was the vice chair, we were able, during the pandemic, to kind of move things forward, and we did what we did. And Joe wound up being hired full-time. But it is confusing, and I have to admit, we have no position right now. We have discussed it fairly robustly, and it was my idea that, okay, why don't we each take, at the next meeting, a piece of, you know, all these documents, take them home, look over what it is that the declaration says as compared to the Mass General Law and the bylaw we passed, and then come back to the next meeting after that with some recommendations, and then vote a position about what it is we're trying to accomplish. So, there is no, the trust has a position, and we're actually trying to put it over on the Board of Selectmen. If and when we come to a point where we want to amend it, I can assure you, the next step would be to take a vote on it in an open meeting, and then to bring it here, because it absolutely has to have both entities agreeing to any kind of a revision of it. So that's pretty much where I'm at. Thank you.
Mary?
I guess I just really don't see what the problem is. You know, and maybe I should read that, Don. I'll take that law and read that. I don't see the problem in having the town administrator on the trust and/or as the chair. I don't see the problem with that. So I don't know what we're poking around in this.
Any, I mean, I think I'm going to wait for some direction from the trust as a whole, on the direction they're at. But one of our tasks will be to read the document and suggest changes that we would want, and then we will disagree with anything that they come forward with that they don't. But we'll obviously be able to vote those individually. Is there anything else, or do you need more time? Obviously, we have plenty of time to absorb the document and think through any other changes.
I've read through this a couple of times. One is early on, because I was interested in housing, and then I dug it out when it came with the agenda packet and did it again. I can't say there's anything that jumps out at me. And the trust had to know this document, because you signed it. So I don't know...
That was the first and only time I saw it. It was never available publicly to anybody on the trust. I couldn't even find it in the Registry of Deeds.
Okay, I don't know. So I don't have anything in particular, nope.
We can always wait till they come back with something.
Yep, and see what they want to propose.
Julie?
Yeah, no, I would agree with Mary. When I read through the documents, I mean, you know, Chapter 140 and the Declaration of Trust, both talks about, the Board of Selectmen shall appoint five trustees, one of whom shall be the town administrator or designee, and one of whom shall be a member of the board. And that's exactly what the document, the trust declaration says, the same thing.
Chair, that's the difference.
But it says "or a designee." And here, it says specifically about appointees. It says, sorry, I just lost it. It says the town administrator or his designee.
I'm looking Mass General Law, it doesn't say that.
But Chapter 140 does, and our Declaration of Trust does. I don't, I guess I'm struggling over the issue.
Let me send that to all of you, because Paragraph B does not say that in the Mass General Law.
Larry?
I've written a note to myself, homework, so we'll...
What's that, Larry?
Homework. To understand it, because I know Don's talked to me a couple of times, and I think Joe mentioned it. Julie and Mary, as far as I understand, are correct. The difficulty comes in, is does the designee apply to the chairman or not? And should be, possibly that should be clarified, that minor point, or maybe major point on flexibility. But I'm waiting for the trust, and we'll come and see what the recommendations are, and we'll come up with a solution.
Joe, anything further?
No, thank you.
Can I just go back, sorry, one, the sentence I was looking for, under the appointment and tenure of trustees. "One trustee shall be the town administrator or his or her designee, who shall act as chairperson and shall have a vote. One trustee shall be a selectman, as designated by the Board of Selectmen." And the remaining three are appointed, so...
So my comments are, I look forward to the trust's vote and conversation, so I can see where the entire trust lands on what changes it'll make. I, too, don't really understand, there seems to be confusion over the trust declaration. And Don, I know, we got into this, Joe, you and I, and Don got into this a little, because Don had been acting chair, and the trust documents clearly state that the chair shall be the town administrator. So I think, you know, if that's something that the board votes, the trust votes, that they should change, then the board obviously will rely on the trust vote to move forward. The "or a designee," to me, I struggle with a little bit, because if the town administrator takes three meetings off a year because of conflicting things, and he's the chair, I don't, I personally don't think a designee of the town administrator should be chair. I would think that it would fall to whomever the vice chair was voted in to run the meeting, not somebody that wasn't up to speed. So for me, it makes more sense to have a vice chair in any organization, I'm not sure, I care, in trust, or Board of Selectmen, or anything. Because I believe you have the right to have a designee at these meetings, don't you? Under the charter?
Yeah.
Assistant town administrator?
Yeah.
Now, she wouldn't chair this meeting.
That's the first I've heard of that.
It's like, oh, let me look into that.
Exactly, I'll see you in January.
We haven't done your performance prior. But I would say, that to me needs to be neatened up. As far as, I could go either way, and it's really, I don't believe it's our decision, I could go either way on whether or not you elect a chair. In most organizations, there's a vote, and you elect a chair. So I could go either way on that, but I do believe that the change starts with the trust, not the Board of Selectmen. And then I would also say that Cultural Council has term limits. And I think that that was, you know, when we got the report two weeks ago, and Tina Games had to step down because she had maxed out. I think that's something that the board should look at, and I know that it says that they're pointed to two-year terms. But this board, I think it would be important to us to address whether or not we should add a term limit to that. And that the three members at large that are on there now, I think, to keep things fresh, maybe there should be a term limit on that, and that this shouldn't be part of our automatic reappointment. It's an extremely important organization that can spend money. So I personally would recommend term limits. And then we should also discuss, you know, when we discuss our selectmen's appointee. We wouldn't want to, if we had a career selectman, to just say, you know, you're going to have the next 15 years, once somebody's on there, you know? So, you know, and that, Don, that's not targeted at you, but if you decide to run...
Shoot me if I'm here 15 years from now.
Well, I'm just saying, if you decide to run two or three more times, the board might want to freshen up, or give somebody else the opportunity to act on that trust. So that's another important thing to me. The rest of this seems like legalese, but clarification on who runs the meeting in the absence of the town administrator, I think is one that's really important for me, for you guys to have the conversation. And the intent of this whole trust, the conversation, there's some in the public that are acting extremely confused, and at least one member of the trust at large is acting extremely confused. I have no confusion. We were told over and over and over again that we're going to mirror the Yarmouth Trust. The Yarmouth Trust reads the same way. So that's not, doesn't mean we can't change it, which I think is why we're having this conversation, and the trust is having it. But the intent going to town meeting, ours may have been late, which a lot of things were late at that time. But the document itself is a mirror image of Yarmouth, and Bob Lottin was told to copy it, if I'm remembering it correctly. Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The devil's always in the details, and the only part that I'm going to get into now, because we haven't voted on the trust, is, in practice, the prior town administrator actually used this as basically a band, where we were the supporting musicians, and he was the front man. We did not know, in two instances, he had promised people money to support projects that hadn't even come in front of the trust, and in two instances, that we were able to document, he did not tell us that we had rights of first refusal to property that just finally wound up getting developed by somebody else. So it did not function as an organization where everybody had a say in things.
We are good?
Yep.
Moving forward, we'll wait for some direction from the trust. Mary?
Yes.
The spotlight is on you.
And I have eight minutes, I believe. I move, I move, don't interrupt me, you're slowing me down. I move that we vote to approve the 2022 Annual Auto License Renewals. A&amp;G Accident Repair Inc., DBA Cranberry Collision, 161 Queen Anne Road, Class IV. All Out Performance, 266 Queen Anne Road, Class IV. B&amp;B's Automotive, 805 Route 28, Class II. Carlos Tapia Inc., DBA JC Auto Sales, 195 Queen Anne Road, Class II. Dave's Garage, 910 Route 28, Class IV. Harwich Port Boatyard, 4 Harbor Road, Class I. Peter S. Stagg, 182 Route 137, Class II and Class IV. Reflections Auto Restorations and Collision, 4 Evergreen Way, Class IV. Sam's Auto Repair and Sales Inc., DBA Sam's Automotive Center, 413 Route 28, Class II and Class IV. Scott D. Hardy, DBA Scott Cycle, 210 Queen Anne Road, Unit 1, Class IV. Stevens Auto Repair, 216 Main Street, Unit 748, Class IV. And Wayne's Auto Service, 643 Main Street, Class IV.
Moved in second, any discussion?
I have one question.
Go ahead.
So, Peter S. Stagg, 182 Route 137, right? That's been sitting there for ages, and I'm just asking, in terms of when we're voting for this, we're just basically saying we're going to renew the auto license, but technically, what's there?
I had the same question, actually. That doesn't seem to be a going business. I drive by there, not as much as you do, but I never, and so it's not clear why, I assume he's renewing this, so it helps his resale value at some point? But is there any policy that says it has to be a going business? A new person would have to come in anyway, I would think. I just, I had the same question Julie did, because I never see any activity there that indicates a business.
If the board's comfortable and wants to remove this one from the motion, and have Joe look into that? Joe?
I will say that we've looked into it insofar as it's exactly what members have said. He's comporting with the law that allows these licensures. We believe he has a vehicle on the property and has repaired portions of a vehicle throughout the licensed year. It's our understanding that he has renewed, so that he retains the right to potentially sell the business. If he were to not renew, or if he were denied, then the business would go dormant, and it causes, calls into question any number of issues with regard to grandfathered use and things of that nature. So, long story short, we understand that Mr. Stagg applies every year, and has done so for several years, for the purposes of maintaining the licensure. If the board is curious about if you do not renew tonight, and what steps you could take, we would have to work with council to figure out what rights the licensee has versus what rights the town has as a licensing authority. But, long story short, we've been told that it's, has been done for years to keep this going, in the event that he wants to sell it as a used car dealership with auto repair.
I'm okay with that, I want to continue.
Yeah.
Michael?
I'm fine.
What's the harm in giving him the license? Is there any harm to us?
I would argue in the long term, no, the harm would be in denying it and the potential litigation that could result.
Okay.
Because it's a grandfathered use. So he's doing what I would argue is something proper for all parties right now.
So that's fine, that was my question, is if there's not an active, you know, was it active, considered active? So I'd say...
It's a fair question.
Yeah, I'm okay with it.
Moved in second, any further discussion? Don?
Yeah, just one question, it wasn't asked. There's no limit on how many of these we could issue throughout town, right? So if he's not occupying somebody else's...
Correct, there's no quota when it comes to these types of licensure.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five zero?
I move that we vote to approve the 2022 Annual Common Vicular's License Renewals. Alexander the Great Inc., DBA Alexi's House of Pizza, 181 Route 137. Blue Stripe LLC, DBA Cape Seagill, 31 C Street. Brax Restaurant Management Inc., DBA Brax Landing, 705 Route 28. BLM Restaurant Group, DBA The Lanyard Bar and Grill, 429 Route 28. Ember Pizza Inc., DBA Ember, 600 Route 28. Epiros Holdings LLC, DBA George's Pizza House, 564 Route 28. 400 East Inc., DBA 400 East, 1421 Orleans Road. Harwich Port House of Pizza Inc., DBA 330 Route 28. Hot Stove Inc., DBA Hot Stove Saloon, 551 Route 28. Morin Froughton Inc., DBA Lighthouse Cafe, 216 Route 28. Ruggies Inc., DBA Ruggies Breakfast and Lunch, 707 Main Street. Shogun Inc., DBA Noble House, 21 Route 28. Shooting Star Realty LLC, DBA Bukas Tuscan Roadhouse, 4 Depot Road. Subfleet Inc., DBA Subway, 1 Austin Road. Morning Star Restaurant Inc., DBA Villa Roma, 278 Route 28. WFS Restaurant Group Inc., DBA Alawet Restaurant, 787 Route 28. Zack Inc., DBA Castaways, 986 Route 28. And Zoo Garden Inc., DBA Seshuan Delight, 1421 Orleans Road.
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion? Don?
Yeah, it's just a minor thing, but WFS Restaurant Group is not operating as La Alawet anymore. Yeah, it's just a minor thing, but WFS Restaurant Group is not operating as Lalouette anymore.
I'm not sure what the legal entity is.
The sign in front of it has Christian's Chicken and Pulled Pork Barbecue. It no longer says Lalouette anywhere.
That's interesting because it was Christian's Alouette, and just recently, they started, must have been in the last couple of weeks they changed. I just know it's in today's paper, the advertisements, barbecue.
The sign has, is covered over, and it's, it is what it is.
But this is a DBA, so I think we're okay.
I would suggest that we vote it and then ask Danielle to contact and change it. Joe?
The bigger issue would be on the liquor license that was approved last week. What they may be looking to do is rebrand over time. So the, I would argue that the smart play, if I can use that phrase for all, would be to do exactly what he's doing because the licensure for the ABCC would take more time.
And to that point, Mr. Chair, if I might, just to point out to everybody on the board that he actually closed for excessive period of time in the summertime and did not use that license. You know, during that point, you're supposed to get permission. So I mean, it might be a good time to have that conversation forward-looking, that you can't do that again.
We can do that administratively, if that's what you're asking.
That's what I'm saying, yeah.
Moved in second, any further discussion?
Just for the record, Item H eight, Harwich Port House of Pizza Incorporated, there is no DBA, so that is stricken. They're operating under their corporate name.
That was not in your motion, right, Mary?
That was not in my motion.
Don't make her read it again.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I move that we vote to approve the 2022 Annual Lodging House Inholders License Renewals. Barnaby Inn, 36 Route 28. Braddock, Inc., DBA Winston Inn and Beach Resort, 4 Braddock Street. Braddock, Inc., DBA Winston Inn and Beach Resort, 114 to 118 Parallel Street. Harwich Inn and Tavern, 77 Route 28. Harwich Port Seafarer, doing business as Mooncuster's Tavern and Inn, 86 Sisson Road. Sands Hospitality, Inc., DBA The Platinum Pebble Boutique Inn, 186 Belmont Road. And Cease Camp, Inc., DBA The Turn Inn, 91 Chase Street.
Second. Moved in second, and any discussion?
None.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Five zero, town administrator's report.
Just to note, actually, under correspondence, you'll see that after David, Dave Ryer presented, staff was alerted by other staff that his report was actually submitted and lost in another department's mailbox. So it's included in your correspondence. That's the extent of my report this evening.
Selectmen's report, Larry?
None.
Julie?
None.
Mary?
Nothing.
Don?
She's trying to, I'll say anything, none.